So, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of School Trustees. We'll begin by asking those of us, or those of you who are here with us tonight, to stand and join with us in our pledge of allegiance.
Agreed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And when the TV goes on, we'll just join in progress, but it's five after, so we really want to get started. Could we begin with the introduction of members, starting to my far right?
Good evening. Steve Corona from the 5th District.
Glenna Yale from the 2nd District.
And I'm Becky Hill from the 3rd District.
Julie Hollingsworth, District 1.
And I'm representing the district at large.
My name's Mark Giacquina. I'm an at-large member of the board. And to my far left, Barb Trout, the secretary to the Board of School Trustees. And seated next to Barb is our superintendent, Dr. Wendy Robinson. And good evening, Barb and Dr. Robinson.
Good evening.
Krista, just give me the countdown when we're ready to go on and I'll, you know, I'll stop and...
We just switched the line.
Okay.
We're on.
Okay. And we also want to welcome those of you who are watching the broadcast version of our meeting tonight. We begin tonight's meeting with the awards and recognitions. Barb, did we get any word whether or not Lauren was going to be here on gymnastics? She was competing in a track meet, so...
No.
Okay. So, Item B, we're going to skip Item B, but I'm going to recognize her anyway. This is, tends to be what happens this time of year. So many of our students who are winning awards are active students and they're involved in other activities, so oftentimes they'll have to miss. But that will not prevent us from acting on the recommendation that we recognize the Irwin and Arlington Elementary School students who placed in the top 10 at the state level in the Indiana Association of School Principals Math Bowl Competition. Now, here's the information the board received, and I think it's really interesting for the parents and friends and the taxpayers who support Fort Wayne Community Schools. The 2016 Math Bowl was held statewide on Thursday, February 25th, at 53 different sites throughout the state. The contest consists of four rounds of eight questions each, and each school can send in a team of three students at a time with substitutions allowed after four questions. All sites then forward their scores to the state for the state ranking. Irwin placed 3rd out of 127 schools in the Red Division, and that's the small school division with no 6th graders. They scored 26 out of a possible 32 points. In Round 4, the Irwin team scored a perfect round of 8 out of 8 questions correct. Arlington's team placed 9th in the state for the Red Division. So, we'd like to read the names and have you come forward so that Fort Wayne can see who you are and we can, we are members of the board and our superintendent can recognize you. So, from Irwin Elementary School, we want to introduce to you Bryce Adelman, the captain of the team.
He's not here?
Emmanuel, and again, some of these students are doing other things, so we understand if you're not here. Emmanuel Hoover.
He's not here either.
Dylan, okay. Dylan Rosemond, and that's okay. I'll just, I'll read them a little bit slowly, so... Hi, Dylan. Hunter Nago.
Hey, Dylan.
Hey, Dylan.
Monty Fetters. Chase Dennis, and Chase is another one of the team captains. Jackson McCullough. Isabel Seng. Robert Clay. Miranda Partaker. Siddharth Shetty, another captain. Jeremiah Johnson. Monty Smith Jr. Benjamin Marquet, or Marcus. Alyssa Barton. Audrey Woodruff, the 4th captain of the team. And then Fiona Gaktovstein. Jakia King. Itora Obangudo. And Leila Depre. Diane Stephan is the coach, along with Chris Lekleitner, two of the co-coaches. And then our colleague, Ingrid Ladrew Martin, is the principal at Irwin, and Mary Lowry is the substitute principal who's here for Ingrid. And we need you all to squeeze together so we can get a great picture of this, of this award-winning math team. Can the, yeah, they used, okay, there we go. Get together.
Parents, come on up.
Wow.
Turn your phones on for this. Don't move, folks. We'll wait. No need to rush.
You know, I had this vision after watching the NCAA of these substitutions, you know, where they see smoke coming out of one of these kids' heads, you know, as they're working on a math problem. Substitution, get in there for Miranda.
Is that it? Parents, wait when you're done. Oh, nothing. Is that it?
Got them all? Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, parents.
Okay. And now, I'm going to read off the names of the, of the 9th place Arlington Elementary School. Cassie, oh, we're, I'm sorry, we're going to wait until we clear off that center aisle. I'm sorry.
Very proud parents.
Yeah.
Very proud community, 3rd out of 127 schools. That's great. And what a wonderful, you know, Becky always mentioned, but it's just so great to see the diversity in that group.
Oh, I know.
You know, what a, what a great thing. Okay. Let's start with the Arlington Elementary Team. Cassie Dove. Ani Pizarro.
I think there's no one.
Ani Pizarro.
There you are.
There's, there's Cassie and Ani.
Swimming upstream.
Ali Saleh, one of the captains of the Arlington team. The, one of the other captains, Noah Hafner. The 3rd out of 4 captains is Brianna Rebus. Megan Mosier. Abby Corpus. There's Megan. Ethan McLean, the 4th captain. Sofia Sanchez. Jacob Harold. Aaron Tran. Alexander Yocler. And Matthew Hampton. Now, the coaches of the Arlington Elementary School are Sue Alexander, Gary Gerber, and Jean Smith. And Diane Dekialakis is the principal at Arlington. And we're going to have you, yep, gets, going to get you all squared away so we can get everybody in a picture. And while we're waiting for the photographs, let's give them a big round of applause. And parents, come on up and take all the pictures you want. They'll, you can look at these when they're about 17-years-old and driving you crazy.
We do this every year for the Math Bowl. We need to have them bring us some math questions next time.
Yes. Bring you some.
We could be a team.
We could be a team.
Corona, get in for Giacquina.
What's the answer?
What's a question?
Is that it, parents?
Congratulations, Arlington. Well, we're really proud of Lauren Wagner, who's competing tonight in a track meet. Lauren is a gymnast who competes on the balance beam. She placed 2nd in the regional competition, 6th at sectional, but actually 2nd then in regional, and 10th in the state of Indiana. And so, we're really proud of Lauren Wagner, who, who is working hard to bring home some more hardware, I guess, tonight. And we also want to recognize her coaches, Kim Coke, Kelly Basham, Bob Shank, the athletic director, Kevin Simmons, principal. These are the Northrop officials who, you know, who worked hard on the track team this year and assisted Lauren. So, let's give Lauren a big round of applause as well. And then, next, it's been recommended that the board recognize the Snyder High School Jazz Band, which placed in the top 8 of, in the 2016 Indiana State Middle School, excuse me, State School Music Association, ISMA, State Jazz Contest Finals. The jazz bands from around the state participate in 2016 ISMA Jazz Contest that was held March 3rd and March 4th of this year. The top 8 bands in Group 1 were invited to the state ISMA Contest Finals at North Central High School, and that was held March 18th, Friday, March 18th. The state finalist bands did perform for a select panel of judges. They received section and individual awards. Participating bands received a clinic from an outstanding jazz educator and got to hear the other outstanding bands. In addition to the honor for the entire Snyder Jazz Band, member Nick Kiner was named Outstanding Saxophone Soloist, which is a wonderful honor. So, we'd like the following from the Snyder Jazz Band to come forward so that you can be recognized. Let's begin with Nick Kiner, the winner of that individual Outstanding Saxophone Soloist Award. Nick. Matthew Klingenberg. There's Matthew. Paul Adams. Kevin Cleese, the band director. Helen Hakemeyer is the director of orchestra and the assistant band director, and Nicole Chisley is the Snyder principal. Congratulations. While they're getting their pictures taken, it was with real sadness that we note the passing of David Baker at IU, who was just a renowned jazz leader and player. He was there when I was at IU, and he's been there all those, all these years, and really tremendous loss for the jazz community.
Is that it, parents?
Got them?
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Mr. Kiner, I'm curious, are you a senior?
Yes.
So, what are your plans for next year?
Go to college.
Pursue music as a career or just as a passion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, good luck.
Congratulations. Next, it's recommended the board recognize the Northrop High School, Snyder High School and Shawnee Middle School Dance Team members who placed in the top 10 in state. Dance teams from across the state participated in the Indiana High School Dance Team Association Solo and Ensemble State Finals at Newcastle High School, March 11th and 12th. It's just so, so really exciting to see all the different, different things that, that the district can offer and those that are taken advantage of by, by these really wonderful young men and women. Northrop, Snyder and Shawnee were all recognized for their performances. The Northrop Dance Team earned 3rd place in Varsity AAA Hip-Hop, 4th place in JV Hip-Hop, State Runner-Up in Small Ensemble, and 7th place in Small Ensemble. And I don't know if that's a typo or not, but anyway, unless they had two different teams. The team also received the State Sportsmanship Award, so that's, that's pretty cool. The Snyder Dance Team earned 10th place for Large Ensemble, and the Shawnee Dance Team earned 5th place for Hip-Hop. So, I've got a feeling that Northrop had one place in Small and one place in Large, but, but anyway. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. First of all, Northrop High School. Yaspa Amir. Madison Crissler?
Chrysler.
Chrysler, thank you, Madison. Madison Chrysler. Josh Espinoza. Joanne Harris. Hannah Heckper. Margaret Hughes. Jan Kja, and is it Jan, maybe?
Jan.
Jan, it is Jan, okay. Nick Look. Richie Mon. Cordell Murphy. Ivy Nian. Justin Tran. Kylie Vivert. Alexandria Wilson. And Maria Yukalima. Tremaine Turnbull and Kailene Helmut, along with Lisa Helmut coached these young adults, and we would invite them to come up as well. Is Kevin Simmons here? Is Kevin here?
Yes, he is.
Oh. Kevin, are you back there? I had to turn the page. I see your name is, Kevin, come on up as well.
All right, come on. Is that it, parents? Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Snyder High School. Eliana Friedman. Lauren Shebel. Chloe Slen. Kate Smith. Breland Whitehill. Kendra McDaniel. And Mackenzie Sanders, who coached the Snyder Team, along with Nicole Chisley, principal of Snyder.
Is that it, parents? Okay. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And then, finally, the Shawnee Middle School members. It, recall, they, Shawnee Dance Team, they earned 5th place for Hip-Hop. The members are Kaia Abdullah. I hope I'm saying these right. They used to give me some help on my sheet, but... Kaylee Bolt. Maggie Books. Maggie. Taylor Carr. Lauren Cobb. Cara Daniels. Madison DeRose. Alexis Duckett-Bottas. Mara Fisher. Megan Fleischer. Casey, and I, is this Freeze or Fries? Doesn't appear she's here, is that, is Freeze?
Freeze.
Freeze, okay, Freeze. I was going to say. Nellie Jess, Jessarovic. Giselle May. Alexis Pate. Hannah Razor. Kaylee Roberts. Shannon Sanchez. Amelia Skimos. Kayden Tassler. Johnny Tran. Olivia Wagner. Shelby Lyon. Megan Sexton are the co-coaches of the team. Jennifer Keller and Beth Studabaker are the teacher sponsors, and Matt Shebel is the principal. We're going to have to close ranks.
Two or three rows.
All I can say is Johnny, you know an activity to select. I... Yeah, that's your job.
Can you see?
Yeah, that's your job.
Yeah, panoramic camera.
If I could say something while the ladies are going out, the coaches, 2 of the volunteers for the Shawnee Team are graduates of Northrop.
No, no, the coaches are.
The coaches are graduates of Northrop.
And if you notice the size of these groups, it's because as a part of our K-12, we're having our students at Northrop work with our students at Shawnee and other feeder schools. So, I just wanted you to notice how many students come out when that happens. Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Great. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. There's, there's really very little in it. It's the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, the approval of the vouchers and payroll approvals from the period of March 28th to the period, well, from March 4th to March 28th, and then the personnel report, which you amended the personnel report, right? Okay.
And I have several projections.
So, why don't we start by asking, Dr. Robinson, do you have anything on the personnel report that you wanted to bring to our attention?
Yes, I would if, thank you so much. We have made a concerted effort to make certain that not only do we have our internship program and grow our own in terms of administrators, but we started this process probably the first day of school, making sure that we knew we would have some retirements and some other positions that people might potentially move to. So, I think this is the soonest we've ever pretty much wrapped up our administrative placements. I'm very proud of that. And if you look at the list, what's also very good, it's a combination of internal and externals. So, by the end of this week, potentially, we have filled all of our administrative vacancies for the 16, 17 school year. Would like to just point out some of our principals and particular directors that we have here with us this evening, and there are a couple I know of assistant principals. While I don't have a write-up, I will, if any are in the audience, I'll ask my assistant to help me with that.
Okay.
First of all, Tim Rail. Oh, there he is. Tim will be taking over as one of the secondary directors. Tim is currently the principal at Memorial Park. He began in 2000 in Florida. We won't hold that against him. He joined Fort Wayne Community Schools as a 5th grade teacher. In 2006 and '07, he was a part of our administrative intern program. He has also been an assistant principal at Portage. He moved to Memorial Park in 2009, and we really welcome him to the secondary level as a director. Chad Hisong, is Chad here this evening? Chad Hisong, you have to stand up so people can look at you. Chad Hisong will be moving, he is currently the principal at Northside. He will become the Student and Family Services Director. He started his career in 2000 in East Allen. He came to Fort Wayne in 2008 as principal at Elmhurst, and then has moved to the principal at Northside, and we're glad he was there. As the director of Family and Student Services, he'll fill the position that was vacant for more than a year, and so we appreciate him being in that position. As a part of some reorg, not really reorg, but making sure we have the right people in the right places, Tammy Mullins will be, become the principal at Bunch Childhood Center. Tammy is currently at Tolls. The position at Bunch had been vacant for about a year as we had a resignation, and so we're using Tammy's expertise because she had been there and is familiar Kathy.
If I could say something while the ladies are going out, the coaches. Two of the volunteers for the Shawnee team are graduates of Northrop.
No, no, the coaches are.
The coaches are graduates of Northrop.
And if you notice the size of these groups, it's because as a part of our K-12, we're having our students at Northrop work with our students at Shawnee and other feeder schools. So I just wanted you to notice how many students come out when that happens. Thank you, ladies.
Great. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. There's really very little in it. It's the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, the approval of the vouchers and payroll approvals from the period of March 28th to the period, well, from March 4th to March 28th. And then the personnel report, which you amended the personnel report, right? Okay.
And I have several reductions.
So why don't we start by asking, Dr. Robinson, do you have anything on the personnel report that you wanted to bring to our attention?
Yes, I would if, thank you so much. We have made a concerted effort to make certain that not only do we have our internship program and grow our own in terms of administrators, but we started this process probably the first day of school, making sure that we knew we would have some retirements and some other positions that people might potentially move to. So I think this is the soonest we've ever pretty much wrapped up our administrative placements. I'm very proud of that. And if you look at the list, what's also very good, it's a combination of internal and externals. So by the end of this week, potentially, we have filled all of our administrative vacancies for the 16, 17 school year. Would like to just point out some of our principals, in particular, and directors that we have here with us this evening. And there are a couple I know of assistant principals. While I don't have a write-up, I will, if any are in the audience, I'll ask my assistant suits to help me with that. First of all, Tim Rail. Oh, there he is. Tim will be taking over as one of the secondary directors. Tim is currently the principal at Memorial Park. He began in 2000 in Florida. We won't hold that against him. He joined Fort Wayne Community Schools as a 5th grade teacher. In 2006 and '07, he was a part of our administrative intern program. He has also been an assistant principal at Portage. He moved to Memorial Park in 2009. And we really welcome him to the secondary level as a director. Chad Hisong, is Chad here this evening? Chad Hisong, you have to stand up so people can look at you. Chad Hisong will be moving, he is currently the principal at Northside. He will become the Student and Family Services Director. He started his career in 2000 in East Allen. He came to Fort Wayne in 2008 as principal at Elmhurst. And then has moved to the principal at Northside, and we're glad he was there. As the Director of Family and Student Services, he'll fill the position that was vacant for more than a year. And so we appreciate him being in that position. As a part of some reorg, not really reorg, but making sure we have the right people in the right places, Tammy Mullins will be, become the principal at Bunch Childhood Center. Tammy is currently at Tolls. The position at Bunch had been vacant for about a year as we had a resignation. And so we're using Tammy's expertise because she had been there and is familiar with early childhood education. So she will be moving to the principal at Bunch to help us stabilize that. Tim Captain. You have to stand too. Tim Captain will become the Tolls Intermediate School Principal. He's currently there overseeing New Tech. Been in an effort to stabilize and have that pre-K through 12 connection. Tim will become responsible for both portions of Tolls, the Montessori program as well as the New Tech. He served in the Fort Wayne Community Schools in the beginning as a teacher at Fairfield. Later serves as a tech coordinator. And as I said, he's been since 2012 at Tolls New Tech. So we welcome him as the principal of the entire building. Melissa Plum. I know I saw her. Melissa Plum will become the principal at Whitney Young Early Childhood Center. She joined us in 1998. In 2014, she became an administrative intern at Haley. And she's currently serving as the assistant principal at Haley. She will be at Whitney Young, replacing Sherry Britt, who is retiring at the end of the year. Brad Crozier. I know I saw Brad. Oh, you're sitting next to Tim. Brad Crozier's gonna become the principal at Memorial Park, replacing Tim. He joined us in 2013 as an administrative intern. He served at Lakeside. In 2014, he was an assistant principal at Kikiyanga. He will be coming, the principal at Memorial Park in the fall. Thank you. David West. Thank you, has accepted the principalship at Northside. David joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 2001 after serving in the Army. Thank you so much. His first position with us was as a Title I Resource Teacher. He's been an administrative intern in the '03-'04 school year at Northrop. He also has served as an assistant principal. And he will be replacing Chad Hisong. Thank you so much, David. Jason Witzegruder. Where's Jason? Will become the principal at Northrop. Jason returned to Fort Wayne and Northrop after serving as a principal at Adams Central Middle and High School for the last four years. He began his career in 1998 as a band director. He went on to hold similar positions at several places in Wisconsin and Angola. And he also served as the band director at Northrop. Thank you, Jason. Welcome home. Final introduction, Emily Oberlin. There she is. Emily will become the New Tech assistant, she will become the assistant principal at Wayne, responsible for New Tech. She joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 2006. In 2013, she was a world history teacher at Southside when she was named Teacher of the Year for the Fort Wayne Community Schools. She was a finalist that year for the State Teacher of the Year. In 2014, she completed her administrative intern, including spending a semester at New Tech. She's currently serving as the assistant principal at Northrop High School and will become the assistant principal at New Tech, beginning in the fall. I know there are several others. Fay Wachew.
Liz Bryant.
Is Liz here? Okay. We didn't have Liz in the write-up because she's currently here. But Liz will be moving, she's also a part of the agenda. So Liz is here. And Liz will be working with Fay at New Tech as the Student and Family Community Engagement Manager for Personalized Educational Programs. Did I miss anyone else? I know there were several.
Stacy Razer.
And where's Stacy? Stacy Razor, where's Stacy? Stacy will become the assistant principal. I know where you're going, at South Wayne. Notice Brenda smiling. This is Stacy. Stacy was also a member of our administrative intern program. And who else did I miss?
Jennifer was ignored.
Okay, where's Jennifer? And Jennifer will be at Tolls as a 260 Assistant Principal with Tim. And she has also, stand up again, she was also a part of our administrative intern program. So I think I covered everybody. Did I miss anyone? Thank you very much.
Well, having then made the introductions, are we ready to vote on the consent agenda?
I move second.
Okay, thank you, Steve, for that motion. Julie, for the second. Unless there are any further questions, all in favor signify by saying aye. Very good. We then move on to the new business. The first is the application for funding for technology in the amount of $1,950,000. It's something we do every year. It's not put in consent agenda only because it does involve incurring debt. So we pull it out of the consent agenda. The information we're given is, of course, the money will be used to fund the technology plan that was previously submitted to the state and reviewed with the board. Technology funds are currently insufficient to fund all the needs of the school corporation. And it's based on the assessed valuation per pupil with low AV per pupil corporations receiving funds before the high AV per pupil corporations. But the formula is pretty much determined. So it depends, you know, on the amount of funding available. Let's see, Common School Fund advancements differ from the STA-A loans, which we receive on an annual basis. Unlike CSF advancements, the STA-A advancements are given to all applying school corporations regardless of assessed value per pupil. So this one would tend to favor us. Unless there are any questions. This is consistent with the technology plan that was provided to the board a couple months back, correct? So.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So may I have a motion and a second on this?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. The next recommendation is that we approve construction contracts for the 2016 General Building System PPI project at various sites totaling $188,261. The project will include work at 11 different buildings, including those in the base bid and alternates. The work will consist of five classroom renovations and four kitchenette replacements. In addition, steel toilet partition replacements and door and hardware replacements will occur at various buildings. The project was designed by Kelty Tappy Design, Inc. It's part of the Capital Projects Fund Plan and is within the budget for the Capital Project Fund, which is, which as we all know, is a separate tax-supported fund from our rate. The work should be completed by July 22nd of this year. If we get started right away. And you can see on the sheets that you were given that Shankle Construction, Inc. is being awarded the bid at $188,261. Questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It, next is recommended that we approve construction contracts for this year with Strom Division of SGI, Inc. in the amount of $131,351. And it's kind of broken down on the information we've been given between Forest Park, Levon Scott Academy floor, Levon Scott Academy flooring material, the South Transportation Office suite flooring replacement. This is flooring at those buildings, including Young Early Childhood. It's 11 buildings, including those in the base bid and alternates. Work consists of flooring replacements in classrooms and corridors, as well as the office suite at South Transportation. It was designed by Kelty Tappy. It's part of our Capital Projects Fund. It's within budget. And it's, again, to be concluded by the end of July 2016. So may I have a motion and a second on that. It's going to the low bid.
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? So carried. Next is request that we approve the contract for the guaranteed savings project at various sites. The total contract is $363,549. And as you can see, when you turn the page, there's a breakdown on all of these. Then it totals up $363,549. It's to retrofit or replace lighting fixtures in eight different buildings. And it's, the T-12 fluorescent lamps are no longer manufactured. Therefore, they have to be replaced. The retrofits and replacements will be with energy-efficient T8 fluorescent lamps and ballast and LED fixtures. The work will be completed by August 5th, 2016. Ann Duff is a firm believer in the T-11 and is boycotting this vote. The T-12 is just, can't accept that. And I understand as a matter of principle, the work will be completed by August 5th, 2016. Funding for this project will be from a combination of Capital Projects Fund and our school building basic renewal, restoration, and safety project bond. 10 different vendors got RFPs for this. And was this, did this go to the low bid?
One vendor responded.
So the economy is obviously picking up because we had one responder. So that's the way it goes. But anyway, we're getting all of this done.
Nobody wants to come change the light bulb.
The old T-12. So unless there are questions about. Ann had a parental obligation, and so she had to.
I was in Snyder the other day, and it's just amazing as we go through the building, going through the repair program, what lighting will do to a corridor, a hallway. Just amazing.
Classroom.
Classroom. Yes.
I agree with you, Steve.
I move approval.
Thanks, Steve. Motion and a second. Thanks. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? So carried. And then finally, I think, is that?
Two more.
Nope, two more.
Nope, two.
Okay. The next one is a change order to accept alternates 1 and 2 for the Maplewood Elementary School project on the roofing projects. The original approved contract was for the annual Capital Project Fund roof program. Two alternates totaling $188,300 for additional roof replacement at Maplewood were not recommended for approval due to concerns over whether or not we'd have the money. It's recommended now that we accept those alternates and to fund the Maplewood project with the 2012 School Building Basic Renewal Restoration and Safety Project. So we took it out of the first alternate because we weren't sure we'd have the CPF funding. And now we're putting it back into the bid and paying for it out of the bond money. So that's good. So this is part of our regular roof replacement plan. It's just including Maplewood now.
I move approval.
Thanks, Julie.
Second.
And a second from Jordan. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Thank you. And now finally, an approval that we vote in favor of construction contracts for the 2016 site improvements at various sites. This will involve improvements at a total of 25 buildings, including those in the base bid and alternates. The work is to be completed, the work to be completed includes miscellaneous asphalt repairs, resurfacing in concrete pavement, walk replacements at several buildings where they've probably become a bit of a hazard, where you've got chipping concrete, et cetera. Work will include installing new playground fencing at Bloomingdale and South Wayne Elementary Schools and expanding the parent pickup lane at Harris Elementary School. The project was designed by MSKTD and Associates. Funding for the project will be from a combination of the Capital Projects Fund and the 2012 School Basic Renewal Restoration and Safety Project. The project specs require the work to be completed by July 29, 2016. So nothing real sexy in here, but once the surface of the walks and walkways and drives begins to crumble, it has to be fixed. The total here is $921,750. And the funding that's available, it's going to the low bid, Wayne Asphalt, which undercut Brooks, in this case, by about $75,000. About $80,000, I guess so. So may we have a motion for this?
So move.
Second.
Thanks. Thank you, Glenna, and thank you, Steve. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried.
I just want to say, going through all that, I'm pretty sure the majority of these are, Darren, are local contractors or designers.
The only one that is not is Performance Services. They're out of Indianapolis. That's doing the guaranteed savings project.
Yeah, okay. But the rest of them are. I just want to keep reminding people that the money that we're spending is being used right here, is being spent right here, too.
So with that, we'll open it up to comments from the board and our superintendent. And then we'll be ready for adjournment, Steve.
No comments. All right, thank you.
Aglenna, anything?
Hi, Pat Sussel. Just great to see so many students up here in front. I always love this time of year. It's just really great. And I give best wishes to everybody for spring break. And please be careful because we need all you back, even though you're driving down these highways going south. Everybody seems to be going south. But be careful, okay? We need you.
Glad to see all the parents here, too. And yes, have a safe, relaxing, and refreshing spring break. As they say, come back tanned, rested, and ready.
No comments. The only comment I have is it was, it was good to see other districts follow our lead on the iStep pilot testing. My next question is, given the amount of publicity over the legislation doing away with iStep, whether, really like to understand why we're taking this test. I understand it's necessary, but I also wish that there were a way, and if we can create a way, I'd like to do it for all of the districts to simply say no to this year's iStep. It's going to be an exercise in, not futility, but absurdity because the next test, in other words, to use this test as part of an ongoing demonstration of progress will be absolutely impossible because there's going to be a different test. So to compare the results of two different kinds of tests to determine whether or not you're improving is no longer feasible. This is just a colossal waste of the time our professional educators need in front of these children and young adults. It is just absolutely preposterous. And if it weren't for the fact that the district needs it for accreditation and students need it to graduate, I would say right here and now, let's vote not to take it. But I don't think we can do that without some careful thought. But I will tell you that if everybody across the state, all the school boards were to decide that they weren't going to take it, there'd be very little that could be done about it. And I don't know how we get that done, but I wish we could because this is just pure stupidity. Absolute stupidity. Anyway, Dr. Robinson?
I'd be happy to. Just a reminder, we have to go through this process again for the 16, 17 school year. One of the things that I'll be talking to board officers and the board with soon, there are two things we have to focus our energies on. One, we've kind of started a process with the other urban superintendents. And that's around the values chart, which will determine, based upon this year's scores and last year's scores, they still are tied to the A to F. And last board meeting, we were, we were discussing the fact that they had changed some of the numbers within the values chart. But as I talk with other urban superintendents, it's always what's behind the curtain that you have to be very careful about. So that is some information that as, there are 36 districts associated with the Urban Schools Association. There will be a state board meeting on the 15th of April. And obviously, we'll talk and have conversations about what we need to be saying about that values chart because unfortunately, Mr. J pointed, that's going to be used for two years. So that's.
Well, in the 2017, we are going to see the iStep again. I mean, kind of misspoke. But after that, it's not going to be.
Right. But the other part we have to work through, and we have to be very structured in how we do that, is what comes after iStep. Because our concern always is just to have another test with a different name, but the process is still the same. It's not really. We've talked at length about the fact that there are more things to judge success than, or areas you need to improve rather than one test. So those are not conversations we need to drop at all. But that April 15th, we'll obviously have to have some conversations before that board meeting, state board meeting, where they decide what to do with that chart. And I'm not touching the not taking iStep.
All right. So with that, we will introduce a motion to adjourn the meeting. We will then close the official part of the meeting. We'll open up the microphone to any citizens who wish to address the board at that time. So may I have a motion?
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman?
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So we are now officially adjourned. The microphone is open to anybody who would care to address the board at this time.